Executive Panel and I will be chairing this meeting to begin a few matters of housekeeping. Action and the events of emergency, there's no practice alarms planned for the meeting. So if an alarm sounds, please evacuate City Hall by going down the main staircase and out to the War Memorial in front of City Hall. Would speakers please use microphones when they're speaking? The meeting is being live streamed on the council's YouTube channel. Members of the committee may use electronic devices to access their meeting papers and visitors are welcome to use mobile phones, not that we have any. But please use them discreetly. Members of the committee and officers will introduce themselves, starting from my left and going around the room. Start at the end of my left, that's you Charlie.
I councillor Charlie Kane.
Councillor Hannah Hechtner, Nerton Wood and I'm supping for councillor Bolton who isn't able to come today.
That's Richard Lawson, apologies for being a bit late.
Councillor Judith Lovett and I'm a councillor for Eton Ward.
Gopreet Pada, councillor for Leyton. Thanks.
Nick Austin, I'm the new executive director for climate and environment at the council, been in post about four days, so thank you.
James Mills, environmental strategy officer.
Phil Hunt, environmental strategy manager.
Leonie Bowett, senior committee officer.
Thank you all. And by way of apologies, councillor, we've received apologies from councillor Bolton and from councillor Phlox, who are being subbed by councillor Hotchner and councillor Kane. Do we have any declarations of interest, please? And if we move on to the minutes, item three, the minutes of the last meeting held on the 10th of June are before the committee for confirmation. Are there any points of accuracy that needs to be raised?
Apologies, they were circulated via email. If you want to defer it to the next meeting, that's absolutely fine.
Yeah. If we're happy. Well, for my part, I feel quite confident, but I am happy to defer it. But if we can, we'll just go with it. Okay. So can I, so no points raised, can ask for a proposer and a seconder, and then we can go to a vote. Am I allowed to propose? I'll propose. And then, thank you. And that brings.
Thank you. Yes, we've got a couple of members who don't normally attend. So I'll just run through how we categorise our environmental action. And that informs the structure of the report. So we previously consulted on a document called the Climate Responsive Norwich Programme, which sets out our scope of activity over the next 10 years. And that breaks the council's environmental activity into citywide climate action, climate action for the council's general fund for our operations, climate action for our housing revenue account, for our social housing stock, and for biodiversity improvement, which we're increasingly referring to as nature recovery. It's just a slightly more invo phrase. So the main headings of the report are structured according to those four areas of activity. And then within each area of activity, we break down where we have something to report according to leadership and coordination, finance, communities, homes and or buildings, infrastructure, transport, waste and land use and emissions removal. So it just gives a nice structure to, a comprehensive structure to everything we do. So paragraph three of the report, which is the first activity under citywide climate action. So as we've already heard, we have a new directorate for climate and environment. Nick has been voted in, do we say, by full council? Appointed, voted, ratified and started on Monday. We're delighted. So it heralds a slight restructure. So the environmental strategy team, which I manage, is being restructured into the new directorate alongside the planning and regulatory teams, department and environmental services teams. And it makes a very sensible structure to take forward our climate and environmental action. And I think a little bit of the history is previously the environmental strategy team was structured under housing and communities. We've built really good relationships there. We're doing lots on our housing stock, which we will report. And moving over to work with planning and regulatory really kind of strengthens the relationships between environmental strategy and those parts of the council. So, you know, I think it's a very positive move that, you know, demonstrates the council's commitment to its strategic priorities around climate and environment. So moving on to paragraph four. We are several months into producing a net zero pathway plan for Norwich. And this is a carbon reduction plan for the city by another name. It's ambitious. And I'd just like to say a few words around what its ambitions are and where we're at with it. One of the enduring commitments of the council is that we will decarbonise or lead and coordinate the decarbonisation of the city according to the principles set out by the Paris Agreement. So this isn't a continuing of today's emissions with a sudden kind of decarbonisation date of 2045. It means that we're adhering to international and national carbon budgets to make sure that we take what's known as a science-led approach to decarbonisation across all of our climate action work. And previously, we made a commitment to use what was known as the scatter methodology for breaking national carbon budgets down into city area targets. And James reliably informed me earlier that scatter stands for setting city area targets and trajectories for emissions reductions. It's a way that, as I say, that our national carbon budgets, which are in law, can be disaggregated down to the cities of the UK. So of course, you know, our work is aligned to scatter. Slight fly in the ointment is that scatter is no longer being updated. Every year that rolls by, we use more, we emit more carbon, the budgets are reduced. And the Tindall Centre, who was originally funded by central government to develop the scatter methodology, their funding has been withdrawn for that particular methodology. So we've gone to some consultants called Small World Consulting, who we've used before. And we've reset scatter, we've basically used the scatter methodology and recalculated our remaining budgets. And that's been a really interesting exercise for us because it's allowed us to understand what scatter was all about. And we come out of the exercise with a better understanding. And what scatter does is allocates a significant chunk of UK carbon budget to developing nations. It's a very fair and equitable way of calculating carbon budgets. We stuck with it. And we've calculated a new carbon budget for the city. The other component of the work that we're doing is that we're working with a consultancy called Opergy. And they've developed a model that allows us to work out how many heat pumps, how many electric vehicles, all of the low carbon interventions, how many of those do we need to deliver as a city year on year to stay within the carbon budget of the city? I think it's a really ambitious and groundbreaking piece of work. We're not seeing other cities take such a comprehensive approach. The third component of the plan is that those annual targets for decarbonisation are created in a format that can be used by UK power networks who manage the city's electricity networks and built directly into their future investment plans. So that we have join up between, you know, our targets for the city and the city's electrical infrastructure, because we're electrifying heat and transport, our main kind of emission sources. And that first run of numbers has already gone to UK power networks to make sure that all of the models work together. And that's been successful so far. So where we're at at the moment and what we'll be reporting on at the next SEEP is what do the targets look like year on year for all of our interventions to stay within the carbon budget? And I think what's important to say is, you know, the Paris Agreement required us to reduce emissions, to lead and coordinate emissions reduction in line with a one and a half degree, no greater than a one and a half degrees to two degree temperature rise. And we are, we are at one and a half degrees now. So the plan for the city is our ambition and everything we're driving for is to set those targets to keep us below two degrees. And we're in that pound, shilling and pence of emissions to just to see how we can do that. But that's where we're at with it and we'll, we'll bring that back.
Hannah, sorry councillor Hotchner.
Thanks. This is a came on to ask questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds great. I'm just wanting two questions about the carbon budget. You said it's been recalculated already because obviously emissions trajectories didn't go the way that was hoped. And so I was just wondering whether there's a system built into the project for updating regularly the remaining budget, because I guess that will need to be adjusted in line with other places, emissions trajectory trajectories. And then the second question is how I imagine the current budget is for the city boundaries of the current Norwich City Council. And how will that be, how easy will it be to include different boundaries, depending on how local government reorganisation goes?
So we, we've received really good data for the city's emissions from DESNES. We receive annually, but it's two years behind. So we can then track how well we're sticking to budget. And so that's our first approach to doing it. The second approach is that we have been, James has been researching sources of information that keep us up to speed. So MCS charity publishes information on the number of heat pumps, the number of PV systems installed across the city. So we have some real time KPIs to bring into that. So yes, we're confident that we can keep it up to date year on year. And sorry, your second question councillor. Yeah. We, the methodologies that we've used currently for the current city council's boundary can be rebounded. So, you know, it will be a new plan, it will need to be ratified by the new administration. But in terms, in technical terms, it can be rebounded pretty easily. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Sorry, of course, yes, councillor Lawson.
So yes, this is on the whole of this report or just? Okay, no, that's fine. I'll wait and hold on and think.
Get to. If I may, just can I, was it Opergy? You had Small World Consulting and then.
An Opergy Net Zero Limited.
It's an O P E R G Y. G Y, okay. It does look mad when I write it down. Okay, okay, thank you.
What they decided to call themselves. So paragraph five, the net zero pathway is obviously a really considerable piece of work. So I've spent a little bit of time on that. I'll just start to pick up a little bit of pace. The council has been in the process of developing new supplementary planning documents. The one that we're particularly interested in here is around policy two, which is for sustainable communities. The supplementary planning document as written, I believe it's has been to cabinet on the 10th of September and will go to public consultation during November and December prior to adoption. But importantly, the supplementary planning document holds firm on pretty much, we're calling it a no gas policy for all new development in the Greater Norwich area. So it does push developers down the road of electrification, heat pumps, that kind of thing, which, you know, is good because the national government is very ambitious about how quickly it wants to decarbonise our electricity grid. And indeed, I think that's a great untold success story of the UK, just how quickly our grid is decarbonising. So yeah, we've also managed, at the moment, we have in there the embodied energy of construction is one of the requirements that developers will need to comment upon in their planning applications. And this is for all new development, but I also believe it's for kind of significant redevelopments, something like more than 10 properties. So we'll be able to understand the benefit of demolishing buildings versus refurbishing them when this supplementary planning document is adopted, assuming that it holds those principles that are in there at the moment. Moving on to.
I think I've got a few paragraphs.
I think you have.
Dishing, pushing them up. So paragraph six talks about a Norfolk and Suffolk energy plan. So this is a Norfolk and Suffolk County Council led project, but we have recently responded to a detailed request for information. So this sort of speaks a bit to what Phil was saying earlier about UK power networks and our sort of collaboration with them as we electrify. There will be greater need, essentially greater demand on the electricity grid as we decarbonise. And I always think this is, there's almost all three separate processes happening here at different scales. So at UK power networks scale, we're thinking about the city and the energy requirements there. Norfolk and Suffolk are essentially doing a similar exercise, but for Norfolk as a county as a whole, looking at, okay, what are the future significant energy projects going to be in this area and, and what is required to meet those needs? And yeah, so we've recently provided a whole bunch of information around, for example, our expected housing growth under the Great Norwich Local Plan. Significant projects that may all may sort of come to fruition, such as Norwich Solar System, that's seeking to put lots of solar panels on business roofs in Norwich to essentially feed into their, their plan making there. They've got a consultant called City Science leading that work. And that sort of joins quite nicely onto paragraph seven, which is about the Transitional Regional Energy Strategic Plan. So again, this is a similar exercise being done at the next scale up really. So this is looking at the east of England as a whole. And essentially, there is a, an organisation called National Energy Systems Operator, used to be known by the name National Grid. And they are putting together a regional energy strategic plan, which again aims to sort of capture all of the future energy needs of this, of this region. Specifically, they're sort of interested in the next 10 year period at the moment. And again, there was a detailed request for information that we have responded to, to again provide details around expected housing growth figures, any significant energy projects in the area. And we've currently, we've just sort of, they played back the data to us after we provided the data. They've sort of come back and sort of said, here's what we think you've said. There's a bit of a consultation period ongoing currently that we have to sort of provide a response to. And then they, they essentially plan to adopt that, that initial transitional plan, I believe in March of next year. And yeah, we'll continue to feed into those processes. It's obviously in our interest to make sure that Norwich City's energy needs are captured in those, in those processes. Onto paragraph eight. So this is about satellite mapping data. So we are speaking to a company about a range of quite interesting satellite data, which can help with things like climate adaptation planning. So we've got heat hazard index mapping that we're looking to work with them on. So this would be mapping that sort of shows thermal variance across the city area during heat waves, shows areas of high heat vulnerability. We're aware of sort of similar mapping that's been done, for example, by Friends of the Earth. And it's not necessarily been on the level of granularity yet for Norwich that, that we would ideally like. There's been similar projects done for six other cities in the UK. Places like Liverpool, London, but currently that data doesn't exist at a detailed enough scale for Norwich. So we're seeking essentially to build that dataset. And similarly, there'll be data around tree canopy cover that we can, we can sort of also explore and, and has some obvious crossovers there really in terms of, you know, how, how trees and shading can, can sort of line up with the climate adaptation.
Yeah. Yes, sorry, my apologies. Councillor.
Sorry, I should have stopped to.
I don't know how satellite mapping works, but I was wondering whether it could also capture flood risk.
Flood risk. Well, flood risk is, you can, yeah, I was gonna say there's separate data sets.
So no, it doesn't capture flood risk. But we now have the environment agencies updated flood risk mapping, which includes sea level rise to 2080, et cetera. So we're in a much better place to understand flood risk. Particularly relating to climate, climate related impacts such as heavy rainfall and sea level rises, I say. Is that onto your question?
That's fine. And then moving on to paragraph nine. So this is fairly, well, basically the council has been updating its website. The whole council has been going through a process to update the content on its website. And as part of that, that's presented an opportunity for us as an environmental strategy team to make a bit clearer on the website, how the work streams that we've got going on. And that content has all been drafted and is expected to go live from the 22nd of October is the current plan with the website team. So feel free to take a look after that date and, and it should be, I hope, I think it will be more reflective of all the work that is, that is taking place basically than it, than the website has been to date. So that's a positive thing from my point of view.
Thank you. Yeah, just on, well, specifically with paragraph five, and you mentioned a sort of no gas policy for new development. I may be talking total nonsense, but I'd understood that there was some upgrading of the gas pipe network being done to make it ready for hydrogen gas. Is that A, true and B, would hydrogen gas actually help with, I assume it would be carbon free, but I don't know.
We, in our, in our thinking, we are inclusive regarding pretty much all technologies that might help us decarbonise. So, you know, carbon, sorry, hydrogen is certainly not excluded in any way. It faces a number of technical problems. Not least, it's incredibly good at finding its way out of little holes in pipework, because it's the smallest molecule there is. So my understanding of the way that hydrogen is playing out in terms of how it might be used in our national gas grid is that it's not particularly feasible. It's not feasible to go above quite low concentrations, maybe about 10%. So we're not seeing a significant potential to use hydrogen in the gas grid. And our supplementary planning document wouldn't really welcome applications that consider that. But that said, there are specific applications, transport is one of them. In other countries, there have been quite successful examples of hydrogen being used to power trains, for example. And if we think, you know, East Norwich has an adjacency to our train, local train network, you know, it may be that there is a place for hydrogen in there. So we're not excluding it, but for general housing development and kind of growth of the city, it's, we're thinking it's unlikely that we'll see hydrogen come forward as a proposal. Yeah.
Do you have any further questions? If I may, can I just ask which organisation in paragraph eight with the mapping? It refers to an organisation on the first line, but which organisation is that?
Yeah, it's a company called Four Earth Intelligence.
Pardon me?
Four Earth Intelligence.
Four Earth Intelligence.
Four, number four, or, sorry, number four. Number four. It's, it's four.
Yeah.
E I, Four Earth Intelligence is their acronym, yeah.
Okay, brilliant. I'm just noisy. Thank you very much. We've got no other points. I guess we should move on.
So previously, we've spoken about, you know, the general themes here are an increasing understanding of how we are going to decarbonise. And inevitably that leads to, you know, how do we meet the cost of it? And we have, I've been doing my research and talking to my peers in other local authorities. And what we find is that there is a precedent for local authorities setting up a climate action fund. And the basis of the fund, and I think East Suffolk have been particularly successful with this and set one up in 2019. I hope I've got my local authority reference right, but certainly one of the Suffolk. And I'm pretty sure it is East Suffolk. The way that scheme works is the council borrows money from Public Works Loan Board or similar, could be whatever the National Infrastructure Bank is called these days, sorry. And makes that available to itself to decarbonise its own buildings, to local businesses, to residents on the basis of a revolving green fund. And we are only in the exploring the feasibility stage at the moment, it's important to say, but it's, it's something that I'll be developing a detailed proposal around, the council will be. And we'll be discussing it at kind of senior management levels to see if we can make that work here.
Thank you. I don't know if it's, if it's a similar idea, but I was wondering whether there were any updates on the community municipal investment bonds idea? Because I know there's some funding has been set aside for that in the last budget, but.
So we we have created a commitment, I believe, to raise £200,000 in a previous budget or this year's budget to assist in the decarbonisation of our community centres. We have spoken to providers of municipal bonds and we think they're a bit complicated and expensive is our, they tend to raise relatively small amounts of money, small numbers of millions, one or two. There's been about 15 local authorities from my research have taken advantage of this approach. But when we spoke with our senior finance people, they thought we could probably do a better job ourselves. So yes, we've, we've put the municipal bond idea on hold currently while we're looking at how we can do something that's a bit more scalable ourselves.
So would that be? Obviously, anything we do, any work needs to be handed over to the new authority once it comes into existence. I guess the beauty of the municipal bonds is you've got a tangible thing for a new authority to get their head around. Will that work be done by the time we're closing up shop as city council?
I mean, as we're in the exploring feasibility, I can't give any hard and fast, but it's, would be my ambition that we'd be putting this into the next year's round of budget setting. So and one of the things that we've got in our favour is that the organise, the, the kind of organisations that make this work, we've, we've recently or a few months ago spoke to an organisation who sit in between climate action funds and the public for retrofit. They're called Lendology. So there is a kind of ecosystem of organisations who help local authorities manage this kind of fund. But I, you know, I share your, I, I, I hear your, your concern that, you know, how quickly does this take? And, you know, we'll keep on our agenda, the municipal bond idea, but they also take a very long time to, to establish.
Yeah, I think I'm just a bit concerned whether, why the money has been decommitted, because there was a clear commitment in the last budget of this.
The 200K is absolutely, that is there. Yes, that's right. Yeah, this is. What we'll be coming on to when we talk about our general fund update is that we now have a really good understanding of how much it costs to put PV on all our buildings. I'll do that bit when we, we're getting to the point of understanding to the nearest million or so, how much money we're going to need to decarbonise. And we, we want to have something that's scalable to that and not be limited by, a municipal bond generally raises money from members of the public. And it is, you know, dependent upon the public's ambition to invest.
My understanding is that the 200K was specifically for community centres?
Yes.
And so I just, I know it'll come up again and in an, at another point in the paper, but just if you could explain then how whether that need is covered in different ways or whether, yeah. How, how will the community centres benefit from whatever format of financing we got done?
We, we have made a commitment to fund the second £200,000. So there's, there's notionally £400,000 set aside for community centres. So there's, there's notionally four hundred thousand pounds set aside for community centers. Two hundred uh, is from council funds directly. And the second two hundred thousand is to be raised in an interesting kind of green finance way. We maintain that commitment, absolutely. And, you know, over the course of the, the coming financial year, we will, we will raise and spend that money. That's our current plan. But I'll give more of an, an update when we come to community centers, if I may.
Ah, I forgot, shall we go off?
Probably rattle, shall we rattle through the next?
Yep, I'll just uh, give a very quick update. So uh, paragraph eleven refers to the Solar Together Scheme. This is a scheme we promote every year, um, which is a group buying exercise that essentially aims to get households a good rate on solar panel installations. Uh, tends to be a successful scheme. We get, you know, maybe a hundred extra households will install solar panels each year through it. And this far, uh, so far, we've got a scheme that we're running currently, uh, which the registration period for members of the public closes on the seventeenth of October. And currently we've got three hundred and forty-five households in the city registered for it. Uh, and the idea essentially is that come the end of the registration period, uh, households will then be given an offer for solar panel installations on their property by uh, an installer who essentially wins the, the lowest of, lowest bid, as it were. Um, and then any households that choose to go through that will have the installations completed by June twenty twenty six. Um, and then next one, paragraph twelve refers to the Big Community Switch. This is a similar scheme run by the same organization actually called I Choosea. Uh, but the Big Community Switch aims to get households a, uh, a cheap energy tariff whilst also switching them to a green electricity provide, uh, provision. And uh, there again, there's, there's three schemes of this actually each year. Um, in June, we saw one hundred and one households in Norwich switch to a green electricity tariff through a scheme. And we've got a current scheme running uh, since September, uh, which so far has three hundred and forty-one registrations. And then.
On to thirteen. So the council helps establish a, a community energy company uh, called Our Power. Um, and Our Power are doing really well and we're really proud of them. And we recognize the importance of having energy champions to accelerate retrofit and improve uh, affordable warmth outcomes and that sort of thing. Um, as we'll be reporting, and as we've already reported previously, we've got really significant capital funding for retrofit projects. Um, we've got four point seven million retrofit private houses in the city. Uh, twenty-two uh, million for social housing. Um, and if we add all of our retrofit projects together, we're, we're at about thirty million right now. And we recognize that particularly in social housing, the importance of having energy champions who are trusted and independent to help us win participation for those schemes. And so we are working with Our Power to develop a, a service specification. Um, because we want to let a three-year contract to provide uh, the delivery of energy champions and, uh, and, and, and support our retrofit projects. So um, Our Power are helping us develop that specification. And then at a point in the next two or three months, we will go to a procurement exercise to the market. Uh, and the organization who meets, you know, our award criteria will be awarded that. Um, that contract uh, is going to be circa six hundred thousand pounds for three years support. And it will, I think greatly accelerate our, uh, our delivery of retrofitting in, in the city and help us get that um, capital funding spent. Over to you, Mr. James.
Uh, yeah, paragraph fifteen refers to a slight update to Norwich Climate Mission. So the Climate Mission have recently gone through a recruitment procedure to get some additional commissioners. Um, and they've now recruited six uh, new commissioners um, who fill some gaps, I would say, perhaps in knowledge and expertise that the commission previously had. So uh, just to sort of go through who's been onboarded. So there's been a chap called Matt Tomlinson, who works for the Year, Year Valley Meadowbankers, uh, doing a lot of good biodiversity work in the city. There is Simon Floyd from the Common Lot, who recently led the Great Household to the Marsh, uh, sort of Community Nature Program that engaged a lot of people around biodiversity. Uh, there was a guy called James Vikaro, who's uh, very knowledgeable around climate finance. Uh, there is a lady called Sabina uh, Vrani, who is a part of Sustainable Food Norwich. Uh, and oh my goodness, I'm going to forget the other two on, I, off the top of my head. I, I may have to circulate details afterwards, shouldn't anybody want it? But there's, there's a couple of other individuals as well who will be joining us uh, from the November meeting. Um, and the Climate Commission, as probably many of you know, are essentially a group of independent uh, experts in the, in the field of climate and biodiversity, who uh, we essentially use as, as a sound, sounding board and sort of consultancy on, on key documents and, and council decisions, uh, council moves essentially, uh, sort of the, the city's voice, I would say.
So six, paragraph sixteen, um, there's an interesting new group has started to coalesce in the city. Uh, who are part of the COPEx movement. I see this as a sort of transition towns-esque um, approach to community activity. Um, we've been along to it and yeah, I think there's something really interesting happening here. So, you know, we're, we're going to produce a carbon reduction plan, a net zero pathway for the city. We then need to implement that with communities in Norwich. And I think, you know, we've got good lines of communication with anchor institutions, with public sector. But how we um, bring um, residential communities into that uh, action plan is currently a, a gap. And I think COPEx can be the group that potentially leads us into filling that gap. So it's just an early days, putting it on the radar. We've been to a couple of meetings. Um, it's just my, my senses tell me that there's going to be something interesting coming out of that. And we're very keen at some point to bid for the lottery's Climate Action Fund, which is a minimum of half a million pound, pounds for, you know, a community sort of mobilizing climate action initiative. And I think COPEx could be the group that enables us to do that. So quite, you know, quite interesting sort of governance and advice. Norwich Climate Commission doing that kind of, you know, strategic thinking and guidance. Uh, COPEx doing the kind of community part of that. So early days, but we'll, we'll let you know how we get on there.
I was just wondering that if you had come across Reimagine Norwich as well and their resilience web mapping work.
You know what? I have come across them, but I, I've yet to really, I tell you where I came across them. I was buying a sandwich and I saw they had a little poster on the market, but I need to get them much more on the radar. So thank you for flagging that. We'll take that away.
We know people who've got links, Bridget McKenzie is involved in that.
Yeah, fine. Who's part of the COPEx movement. Yes, please do. Oh, we, we, we would welcome that. Should we do a, a, a real rattle through seventeen and eighteen?
Real relevant. Yeah. So seventeen was just, we, we recently sponsored a sort of a business advice day on sustainability reporting, which was put on by a consultancy called Youth Climate Solutions. Uh, energized young lady called Jasbrook, who runs that uh, that organization, helping essentially to get businesses uh, on board with their sustainability practices. Um, number eighteen refers to the Net Zero Communities Project. So this was a project uh, that the Norfolk Climate Change Partnership led uh, over the last year or so. That's now come to its conclusion. There was a, a, a very good final event held back in June. Um, and one of the appendices, and appendices to this report actually is the, the sort of final output from that project. And essentially that project was engaging with uh, one community in each Norfolk local authority area. And the aim of the project was essentially to find out what are the barriers to uptake of net zero uh, measures? Why aren't more houses retrofitting their properties or using sustainable transport options? Um, and so the report's findings sort of summarizes some of the key findings from that, essentially. Um.
Sorry, if I may, just come in there and say the key findings were that you need really good trusted in, information. You also need handholding, a handholding service. People need to have a trusted and independent sort of advocate. And that's, that gives us the evidence that we, you know, really kind of um, promotes an Our Power type organization as a key component to um, to accelerating decarbonization.
That's good. Um, and then paragraph nineteen um, essentially talks to a bit of a, a potential continuation of that project. So uh, the Norfolk Climate Change Partnership, um, who led that project have been invited to make a further bid um, to Innovate UK, who, who funded the previous Net Zero Communities Project. Um, and so a bid has been submitted for one hundred and fifty K, um, which would be used essentially to develop a bit of an online uh, sort of retrofit hub, information hub of all, all the different sort of retrofit projects that are going on in Norfolk, uh, sort of Norfolk specific case studies. Um, and also looking at how uh, community energy champion projects could be expanded to other parts of Norfolk, such as the Our Power model that we've got going in Norwich.
Uh, sorry, can I just take you back? Um, I said it was interesting, the subsequent paragraphs, but um, back to paragraph eleven and solar together. Um, just to ask about the due diligence done on the installer. Reason I ask is that in fact, my brother had a very bad experience down in Lewisham Borough in London, where the installer went, um, went bust basically. And uh, I mean, a lot of people lost money. They'd paid a deposit. He himself had panels installed, but um, he can't get it connected to the network. Uh, any person who can sign it off wants to install their own panels. So just, so you don't even know that, but yeah, what, what sort of due diligence is done on the installers to make sure they are financially sound for the, the duration of the whole contract?
Yeah. Just to clarify, was that, was he, has he gone through a separate installer? Or was that part of the Solar Together Scheme or?
So together scheme run actually from the uh, Mayor of London, but it was done through individual boroughs.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, so the installer is sort of selected on a, a regional basis. So we have a contact um, at I Choose who run it, who, who sort of keep us informed. Uh, they assure us that there are sort of uh, you know, vigorous checks that a company has to go through, has to meet certain standards of, of trustworthiness, as it were, before they're even sort of allowed to submit a, a bid to the scheme. Um, we have had previously uh, details that I can, I'm sure circulate about what their selection criteria are as I Choosea for. Circulate wider on that. Um, but yes, essentially we're assured there are, there are very fitting mechanisms in place in terms of being trusted traders, um, before they can even submit a, a bid to it. Um, yeah. I'll, I'll take that as an action away if you like to.
Very Councilor Padda.
Thank you. Um, yeah. So thank you very much. I, I, I wonder how, um, and this is, you know, I say this from the perspective of a second generation Asian, South Asian. How do you engage with people who move to Norwich of South Asian heritage, for example? Because climate change, biodiversity, all of those, that good stuff, that, that is something that usually is arms length. It's what other people do. It's predominantly for white British people. It, it's not a South Asian. I mean, I'm being like a prejudiced here. There's some prejudice, but it's from a lived experience. So like, I, I don't know how you tap into that. And, you know, those cultures that are usually like distant and removed from this kind of work.
It's, it's a good point. And I think it's, it's for us to consider more fully when we come to the implementation of our climate plan. But what we've done so far, and it, it doesn't cover all bases, but there's a really strong climate faith group uh, has come together in Norwich. And uh, we met at Peter Mancroft and actually we had representation from all of our MPs there as well. That's right. You were there, of course. Yeah. Thank you. Um, so, so, you know, we, we are starting to understand how to um, reach more marginalized communities or communities that aren't necessarily, um, you know, the, 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 the people that we would expect to come forward when we talk about climate change. But I think there's a lot more work to be done around that. And I think, you know, Norfolk and Wavely Mind have an interesting kind of uh, wellbeing approach. So it's, it's through, you know, partnership working is how we're going to ultimately do that, but still early days on the thinking there. Yeah.
Yes. I mean, you were in paragraph eighteen, you were saying how successful the Net Zero project was. And that was through the um, confidence people had trust and confidence in somebody in their community. And so although it was a geographical community in Eton, I mean, you're talking about a, a, a different sort of community, but it'll only take one or two people in that community.
Yeah.
And then others will listen, I'm sure, you know, because they would be trusted and, and respected and.
That is the Our Power model to recruit energy champions from communities. So I think that's a, a point we can also discuss with Our Power about, you know, how do we ensure we've got energy champions across, you know?
You might find somebody who's an engineer or something and has a particular interest and hasn't actually seen the interest, the connection and, but it's not until you go and look for them. But I will just say that the experience I have of Paul Donoghue, who was the champion in Eton, um, he was such a good, um, good champion and thoroughly, um.
Okay. And it's good to hear. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Asia. Sorry. I'm sorry, Southall. Yeah, that I understand. Yeah. Yeah. Right. So peer working with our counterparts in other cities that are more diverse, I think. Yeah. Okay. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Can I just ask a question in relation to this? Would the development of the communication toolkit, which is spoken about in the Norfolk Net Zero Communities Report, would suggestions like Councilor Padda's brought forward today, would they be valuable suggestions for maybe developing that toolkit? Um, I know that, you know, it's just a, when would that toolkit come into existence? I know it's next stage and that may be an unfair question.
Yeah. So well, the, so it's part of the next bid, as you say, um, we expect to hear by the end of this month, whether that's bid has been successful. And then that project would have to be delivered by the end of March next year. So we would be thinking resources would be created by that time. So yes, certainly it's.
Quite quickly. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Sorry, interrupting again. Have we got any further questions? Like, it's a balancing act, isn't it? Because you want to pin down everything, but you also want to hear everything. So we'll just, um, we'll hand back over to you, Phil.
Thank you. Um, we were fortunate enough to win four point seven million pounds earlier this year um, to deliver retrofit activity in the private sector in the city. Um, you know, we've been doing this for two or three years now and we're actually, dare I say, we're getting quite good at it, I think. So we have not far off fulfilled our quota to spend that four point seven million pounds already. And, and it's a three-year project. So the criteria have been eased. Our experience in um, getting into contract quickly with the provider and, you know, getting out into communities assisted by Our Power has really accelerated this. So I'll, I'll keep this one short, but that scheme's going really well. And we're talking with DESNES about drawing down another, doubling that funding for the city. And quite often what happens is lots of cities don't mobilize very quickly or things change. They don't spend their money. And so there's usually a, a, a wave two, which allows the more successful cities to, to pull down the remaining funding because they hate giving it back to treasury. So, um, you know, we are, we are in the queue for that. Over to you for twenty-one.
Yep. Uh, twenty-one speaks to uh, a scheme we have uh, around what's called the LA Flex, Local Authority Flex provisions of the Energy Company Obligation, ECO four. and Great British Insulation Schemes. And those are both schemes that essentially allow householders to access partially or fully funded energy efficiency improvements to their homes. Under the usual eligibility criteria, it's kind of not something the local authority needs to get involved with. It's just between energy companies, usually in households. But essentially, there exists within those schemes a provision where the council can widen the eligibility criteria so that if people don't meet the usual sort of criteria, which I believe is to be claiming a means test benefit, if they have another vulnerability such as having a particular medical condition, we can, we can essentially sort of say that those people can also access that funding. There's a bit of sort of verification admin that's needs to be done around it. But that is a service that we now can provide essentially. It's, it's, I would say it's fairly niche. There's probably not many households that sort of get captured through or that aren't captured through the normal sort of criteria, but it's, it's a good thing to have available essentially.
Moving on to twenty two, we've been working with DESNES Government Department since two thousand and twenty two to study the feasibility for citywide low carbon heat networks. And the findings of the initial work has been that Norwich has some really great attributes. The benefit that heat networks have is that you can have a central plant building, energy centre, providing heat by means of underground pipeworks to existing and new buildings. And actually, it suits Norwich really well. So our major projects team directorate have really got behind this, actually. And we're working very well together to get to the next round of development of of heat networks in Norwich. And we've identified a site at East Norwich that would be ideal for heat networks, for an energy centre, which would heat East Norwich as it develops, but also provides heat to the city centre. We've got lots of heritage buildings, they're really difficult to install individual heat pumps and that kind of thing on. So this works really well for Norwich. We've bid for some more funding to a unit called the Heat Network Development Unit. They are DESNES's team for Accelerating Heat Network in Cities. And we've put in an expression of interest for seventy five thousand pounds of that funding and offered to match it with seventy five thousand of council funding. It's a very competitive fund, but we're, we're confident that we've, we've, we've got our expression of interest right. So we will expect if we do win that money to find out at some point early next year. And in the meantime, we are going to do something called a soft market test. We're going to formally invite the organisations in the UK who invest, build and operate heat networks at this scale to come to Norwich to find out what our offer is. We've put together a prospectus for them and to understand the level of interest to invest in the scheme, which has a capital cost estimated at about a hundred million pounds to find out what their conditions for investing will be. And the feedback from that soft market test will be used in this next round of development. It's called the Detailed Project Development Stage, DPD stage, which we're hoping to have this hundred and fifty thousand pounds to take forward. And, you know, we're still a couple of years off, of course, maybe five years off from diggers and but this is, this is stuck since two thousand and twenty two, and it's, it's building really well. So, you know, we're fingers crossed that the market will, will be interested in investing and developing in Norwich. So twenty three, similarly, sorry, is that yours? Oh, sorry, yes.
What would the plan be? What's the plan for?
I would just say at East Norwich for now. It, it could skew kind of market activity to be more, to be more, but there is a really great site for it there. So, yes. So city on twenty three, if you don't mind me carrying on, city electrical infrastructure. I've mentioned this, so I won't cover it again. It's just that we have developed an initial set of numbers. You know, what does the set cities' electrical infrastructure needs as we decarbonise year on year towards our twenty forty five net zero pathway? And that information has gone over to UK Power Networks. We get to update it every six months. But we wanted to test that our models kind of align. So that's, that's, we have. And that's twenty four is over to you, Mr James.
Yeah, paragraph. Paragraph twenty four talks about a electric vehicle charge point. We are looking to install at Chantry Car Park over there on Theatre Street. So we've come to an agreement with Norfolk County Council to install a rapid, what's called DC direct current charger using their local electric vehicle infrastructure funding. And it's, we hope it's all the first of many such installations ready through that, that funding. So we're talking with County Council about other potential sites we could fund through that, that means. And we've recently had a low carbon infrastructure officer come and brought to the team as well. So we expect to have further capacity ready to move those sorts of things forward. And then paragraph twenty five is a bit of an update. So we, we've recently heard some good news from First Bus, who already have seventy electric buses in the city, but they have announced they're going to get twenty four new electric double decker buses in Norfolk, which will include fourteen in Norwich, and that's going to serve routes twenty eight, thirty six, thirty seven and thirty eight. That's good news for me because I actually use the route thirty six quite regularly. And I would be very pleased to see the noisy old diesel bus replaced with an EV bus. Paragraph twenty six, oh, sorry, there's a question.
Just wondering what percentage of buses that is that would then be electric roughly?
Off my head, it's about fifty or sixty percent.
I think with the new buses, we're at seventy, anecdotally, my understanding.
We can, we can figure that.
Find that out.
Yeah.
And councillor Lord?
Just waiting for a moment to. Yes, there's a ratio of one to nine chargers to electric vehicles. So two questions. One is, how does that ratio compare to similar authority areas? And secondly, do we know, I have interest, what the total proportion of electric vehicles is registered in Norwich, you know, the total of?
Yes, we do, we do have that data. I may struggle to tell you off the top of my head, but in terms of, to take the EV charger question first. So every quarter, there is UK government data that gets updated that tells you essentially the number of public electric vehicle chargers in each local authority area. In Norfolk, I believe we actually, sorry, in Norwich, we are actually now the leading authority in Norfolk, with, I think, King's Lynn following close behind. And we will see, you know, in, in October this month, in fact, we should get the latest, latest figures for that. And yes, we do, there is also data around registered vehicles. So we can see how many battery electric there are compared to fossil fuel. I will have to get back to you on the exact percentage. I would imagine we're probably still, it could be, it could be sub ten percent, but I will, I will, I'll take that away and send around some details for you. But yes, essentially, that data can be worked out from, from the data that is published quarterly.
Thank you. Obviously, as the number of proportion of electric vehicles hopefully grows.
Sure.
We obviously may or may not need to substitute increase, because one to nine sounds quite high, actually.
It's, it's good. It's an interesting, I mean, we've done, we've tried to research what the, as far as we can see, there isn't really a recommended proportion currently.
And we're excluding visitors in this.
Sure. Yeah, 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 exactly. It was, it's just, that's calculated just from the registered vehicles to, to public EV chargers. So, yeah, it's an interesting question that we're mindful of is how many chargers will we need? And that's something we're kind of working out, really. Yeah. Yeah.
It depends on the amount of housing that's suitable for home delivery.
Yes.
You wouldn't go and use a on-street one if you could have it installed in your own home. And if the house isn't capable of having it, no driveway or something.
Yes.
So it just depends, really.
Indeed.
We've got a number of ideas that aren't quite mature. Thank you. Number of ideas that we're working on aren't quite mature enough to report formally here, but the council has significant land holdings that aren't suitable for housing development. They're little garage sites, they're dotted around the city. And we've done research into where they are. And we're working on an idea that, you know, that there's a possibility that we can do charge stations embedded in the streets there. Because we, you know, kind of experience of EV users is that you don't need to charge every night, maybe once or twice a week. So the idea that we need an EV charger for every house is probably quite way off in the future. But, you know, how can we dot, you know, sufficient EV charging infrastructure around the city so that it is convenient for people? So, yes, we'll, we'll bring back some more thinking on that over time.
Paragraph twenty six talks about an air quality action plan. So whilst we've seen recently, as per the annual status report for air quality, we've seen improvements in, in nitrous dioxide levels, for example, from things like, we think, the introduction of electric buses. The criteria by which air quality is assessed, it has to, it has to fall for three years consecutively before we can dispense with an air quality action plan. That hasn't yet been, whilst we're moving in the right direction, that hasn't yet been achieved for Norwich. So our last air quality action plan as the council was produced in twenty twenty one, and an update will be required by June twenty twenty six. And that's sort of produced collaboratively between us and also Norfolk County Council, Highways Department feed into that quite significantly. And, yeah, it's just a note to say work is underway, ready to develop an updated action plan around that.
We've completed the citywide climate action update. It's the most significant part of the report. The city's emissions, you know, we work on a risk basis. The city's emissions are obviously more significant than the council's operations. And our housing stop, so that's where we focus, but we should speed up now.
Can I ask, just because they listed their waste and land use and emissions removal. I was just wondering why they're listed there and why there's nothing to report. Is it because they're not within the council responsibility currently or there's no?
There's nothing happening since we previously, you know, reported to SEEP.
Yeah. I was just gonna say, yeah, we sort of had Andy Summers from our environmental services team brought a fairly significant waste update last time about sort of changes to, for example, like food waste collection schemes becoming mandatory across the city. So, yeah, I suppose we've, we've kept the headers there as, as sort of, they're the format of the climate responsive Norwich programme. So it's, it's, yeah, just for fullness, really.
So moving on to council, general fund, climate action, the operations as the council as we see it. So we have four new starters who have now started in the environmental strategy team, I'm pleased to announce. We have a low carbon infrastructure officer who works across citywide, general fund and HRA, doing, you know, broadly underground and heat network stuff and electricity networks and infrastructure. A building retrofit officer who is, you know, very much that. How do we reduce emissions from our homes, make them more comfortable, reduce energy costs? An environmental projects officer who is a sort of a person who helps deliver our environmental projects and an energy and water utilities manager, who does the analysis of our energy and water use and helps target opportunities poorly performing buildings and that kind of thing, so that we know where to best spend our money. So, yes, they're all here. Our energy and water utilities manager started on Monday. Yeah, yesterday, that's right. And so we're, we're, we're at full capacity. So that's great. It means we can, we can, you know, we can get on with the job of doing this with a full, full cohort.
And is your office big enough?
That's a dilemma we are currently facing, whether we need to move room.
Having to be more organised in the way that we hot desk. Yeah.
Brilliant, sorry. I mean, okay.
Over to you for twenty eight. Sure, twenty eight speaks to a procurement emissions analysis process we're going through. So as a council, we're sort of aligning to the greenhouse gas protocol international standard for carbon accounting. And that's requiring us basically to think about how we count a wider range of emissions. So not just our scope one, you know, gas emissions from fuels that we directly burn in our buildings, but also scope three emissions, including the products that we, you know, goods and services we procure as a council. And essentially, we are working with this consultancy called CO2 Analysis to analyse a bunch of data that we've taken from our unit four system. And we expect some results from that fairly soon, I think. And it should hopefully give us a bit of an idea about where, you know, where, where in our supply chain there are high levels of emissions that we could avoid through procuring differently. It'll be interesting to see what insights come from that, that process.
No, what? Are we on thirty three?
We're on twenty nine.
Oh, sorry, yes. Well, as we spoke about briefly earlier, you know, we, we are looking at the best way to raise retrofit finance and community centres, our commitment to raise two hundred thousand pounds in addition to the two hundred thousand already currently being spent remain. We'll, we'll come back with future updates on that.
Number thirty, number thirty speaks to the Green Events Code of Practice. So this is something we're working with, with our events team, cultural and leisure team. And essentially, there was a phase one project where Norwich City was part of the sort of core cohort of councils who were looking at how we could develop essentially a code of practice for how events can be run to be more sustainable. And that's produced some interesting learnings. I think they, they sort of applied it to a number of the events last year. And essentially, this phase two is, again, we're part of the core cohort, and it's to essentially widen that out to a number of additional authorities. So I think they want to bring on fifteen new local authorities to essentially take the learnings from councils such as ourselves and continue to develop that and hopefully roll it out as a national sort of code of practice around how events can be run more sustainably. Yes.
So with the general funds, other than energy efficiency work, you know, the, the job of the, the, the general fund is greatly about emissions from buildings. And our two main areas of activity to reduce emissions from buildings are solar PV systems and heat pumps. And paragraph thirty one talks about a bit of bad news for us, really. So the government has been funding something called the Public Sector Low Carbon Skills Fund, which is a fund that pays consultants to work out how to decarbonise the heat of buildings. It's an, it's a fund that we've had access to, which, as I say, pays for engineering consultants to put plans together for heat pumps in our buildings. And the public sector decarbonisation scheme, then fifty percent funds the capital cost of installing the measures. We've drawn on it successfully before. We have a really significant air source heat pump on the roof of City Hall. And it's six hundred and fifty thousand pounds came from the public sector decarbonisation scheme. But the government has defunded those until twenty twenty eight. And in some ways, that speaks to the increased need to find a new way of funding projects, hence the proposal that we've spoken about earlier. And I'm pretty confident that we can fund the consultant study to do that initial work. So we are finding a way around this, but I was very hoping, very much hoping at this stage to bring a a report that said we've drawn on low carbon skills fund. We have consultants appointed, this work is ongoing, but, you know, we've, we are where we are. And as I say, I think we'll be able to fund the, the engineering feasibility component of that. So we'll bring back future, in the future, we'll bring back a report. We are more advanced with our understanding of how to install solar PV on our buildings. We've now completed a study for PV on our first branch of buildings. And we've gone through the process of applying to connect them to UK Power Networks Grid. It's a process called G ninety nine, sounds very techie. And all of those permissions are now in place. So again, we are. And all of those permissions are now in place. So again, we are at a point where you know, we need to fund those uh and take those through to actual delivery. So P V is moving a bit quicker than decarbonisation of heat, but both, both moving forward. Um, thirty three, the community centre retrofit programme. So phase one, as we're calling it, the first two hundred thousand with our new retrofit officer is now very much out on the blocks. Um, we've had a specification produced. We know what we're going to do in each centre. We're doing this, the simple, good old fashioned reliable stuff of insulation, cavity wall insulation, loft insulation, uh insulating above suspended ceilings, that kind of thing. Um, and we're just doing the um various bits and pieces that we need to do before we go to contract. We're having asbestos studies updated and doing surveys and that kind of thing. But we expect to be in contract by Christmas and we expect to have uh that, that work completed by the thirty first of March, by the end of the financial year. So we're, we're moving quickly on that now. And a similar story with the Norman Centre. Um, you know, the council is considering um how we make the Norman Centre more efficient to operate and reduce costs. Of course, energy is always a significant one of those. So we're having our architects and engineering consultants take a look at that with a view to uh insulating it and installing solar P V and air source heat pumps. So a little bit behind the community centres, but a lot of learnings coming out of that. Um, and we're, you know, we're very much um working on the Norman Centre right now. So again, the next seat report, we should be able to have some some conclusions from that.
Uh, paragraph thirty five. So well, there's a couple of paragraphs here about sort of things we're doing to try and promote active travel amongst our staff. Um, so we've got coming up on the twenty first of October, a what we're calling a doctor bike event where essentially we have a bike maintenance man uh from Precision Cycles out the front of city hall. Uh, I believe he'll have a limited number of slots, but there'll be some posters going up probably next week ahead of that to essentially book on. Should you wish to have a bike, have a free ba- basic safety check, uh feel free to book onto that. And that's obviously for all staff as well. Um, and then paragraph thirty six is regarding some barrel bike minutes uh that we have available for council staff. Um, and councillors actually. And so we uh purchased a hundred minute bundle, hundred times hundred minute bundles essentially. And we've seen about half of those, I would say taken up by this point, but we still have some available. So should you be users or wish to use the bikes, e scooters? Uh, you know, that's, that's available for staff essentially to try and encourage active travel. And there's a question, I believe.
Thank you. Can I just double check that the council has a cycle to work scheme? And I'm also yes, and does it have an E V purchasing scheme?
Does it have a?
E V purchasing scheme.
So I, it definitely has a cycle to work scheme because I've recently actually been through, through it myself. Um, I don't believe we currently have an, an E V purchasing scheme, but it's certainly something we would like to yeah, we'll take it getting set up. Yes, yeah. If only, because again, I would probably like to buy an E V through that scheme as well.
So with the, sorry, just a logistical question. I'd need to sign in with my council. Would I need to open a new barrel account?
You need to, it, it, to, to, to control sort of uh redemption of the codes. It necessarily has to be linked to a, a council or councillor email address. So yes, it would require setting up a new barrel and then putting in a promo code on the, on the relevant, got a promo code page. I'm happy to direct you through the process should you wish. Just make use of them. Um, and uh paragraph thirty seven speaks to a survey we have recently sort of sent out to staff um to essentially try and capture a bit of information around staff commuting behaviours. So um, as I mentioned earlier, as we move to the greenhouse gas protocol, we want to capture a wider range of emissions. Um, and one of the sources of scope three emissions that the council has is how its staff get to and from the office. Um, and so there's a, a bit of work going on to try and calculate that essentially from the data that we've, that we've got, so.
That completes the updates on the council's general fund and climate action. And we move on to our climate action for our social housing stock, which we refer to as H R A climate action, housing revenue account. Um, our colleagues in housing have, are towards the end of a long and significant process to appoint uh new contractors to deliver their major works. Um, these contracts will deliver over two hundred million pounds worth of improvements uh to tenants' homes, including energy efficiency and decarbonisation work. So we, we have in place the kind of contracting infrastructure uh to get, um, you know, significant retrofit work underway in our social housing estate. Um, coming on to thirty nine and actually be, you know, this talks to thirty eight and thirty nine. Because of our activity in delivering grant funded schemes, we've got much better cost data on how much it costs to get our stock to E P C C. Um, we've had access to data of, of over five thousand dwellings. Um, and that gives us a really good estimate of how much it costs to get a dwelling from G to C. Uh, if, you know, bring all of our dwellings up to E P C C and that is actually slightly less than we'd previously estimated, probably about ten million pounds less. Um, and so we've recently gone through the annual process of updating the H R A business plan. My team is very much involved in the energy efficiency side, the E P C C side, we call that, and the decarbonisation of heating side. Um, and so that, that new cost data has found its way into the new plan and, you know, our commitment remains that, you know, a very significant amount of money in the region of sixty million pounds. That will be confirmed when the H R A business plan is consulted upon and adopted usually in February uh for council. Um, has remains. Um, we've also looked out further ahead over the, you know, the thirty years. And I think our current budget allocation is something in the region of three hundred and thirty million pounds. Um, lots of work is ongoing to, you know, still put the detail into our decarbonisation plans, but I'm confident that um as much as we know now, uh we have sufficient funding allocation in the H R A business plan to decarbonise uh and get to E P C C. And importantly, previous business plans were modelled to twenty fifty at a time, you know, where we have a citywide target of twenty forty five. So we've re-profiled that capital spend and brought the H R A business plan into alignment with a citywide net zero target at twenty forty five. So all kind of, you know, pretty, um, you know, looks um, yeah, ma- maintaining our commitments to decarbonise our housing stock. Good question. Great. Over to you for forty.
Uh, paragraph forty talks about a recent community wellbeing day uh at Nolan Grove that we uh attended, officers of our team attended to essentially promote our warm homes, uh local grants and warm homes, social housing scheme. Uh, it's all about, you know, a number of sort of outreach measures that we're doing to promote those schemes, try and maximise uptake. Uh, as Phil mentioned earlier, we're actually seeing uh very good uptake of the warm homes. So grant probably going to be oversubscribed on that, uh which is why we're certainly keen to also look at some, you know, any, any additional funding that could come through that scheme.
I'll go on to forty one.
Yeah.
I shall wrap forty one, forty two and forty three together, if that's okay, Chair, just a general update. So, um, we're in the second year of wave two point two, which was a five million pound um capital grant from central government with some match funding from our H R A. That's going well. Um, we're now in contract with Eon to deliver wave three over the next three years. Um, we got twelve point seven million from central government, which we've matched with ten million from H R A budgets. So all in all, we've got about a twenty eight million pound um grouping of retrofit projects there, you know, it's ambitious. Um, we, uh, it's ambitious. So far it's going well. Um, I hope to bring back, you know, um, future updates that continue that theme, but it is quite difficult engaging with social housing tenants and getting them to participate. And, you know, we see that kind of energy champion service is vital to that, as I already said. So we're we're working hard to bring all of the pieces of the jigsaw into play so that we can meet the ambitions uh of, of these projects. And forty three talks about some uh important work that we're doing with a, a specialist architect about, you know, how do we retrofit blocks of flats? Half of our, half of our stock is in blocks, about seven thousand dwellings are in blocks. About seven thousand are housing, conventional housing. How do we decarbonise that? How do we make sure that our spending and our activity is equitable? Because the flats up in that kind of north corner over there has very different kind of response to weather and climate change than the one that's south facing in the middle. And we've, 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 we've developed quite an innovative process that breaks blocks down into individual flats and models them individually. So we can really understand how to intelligently target our interventions. And they will, they're looking likely to be quite different flat by flat. And that's an important part of our message as we start to move into this programme that you know, the notion that you put up some scaffolding and do everything to every flat, just, it's not going to be like that. It's, um, yeah, we, we, we've had some really interesting findings out of this piece of work and it's uh, it's findings that we're sharing with our our counterparts in other social housing providers. And there's some, you know, really interesting stuff going on with how you do retrofit social housing stock. And moving on to forty four, um, we've been successful in winning um chunks of money, fifty thousand pounds is the last one from the same heat network development unit that funds citywide. And these are to understand better how to make more efficient and decarbonise the twenty nine existing heat networks that we have in our social housing stock. We have about two thousand dwellings supplied with heat by heat networks. So this is an initial um amount of money, money to start looking at two or three, but we're currently writing a brief for what, what they, our consultants would call a portfolio review. How much is it likely to cost to decarbonise all of our um district heating networks? And I think the the only way at the moment that I can see for decarbonising all of our seven thousand flats that are in blocks is through new heat networks. So part of that, that, that study that we're about to commission looks at our existing heat networks. And another part of it looks at some typical blocks of flats that we have so that we can start to get a better cost estimate of installing new low carbon heat networks, replacing gas boilers. There's the, the current way that um, most units are heated. So, and that would inform the next iteration of the H R A business plan. We've made it to biodiversity strategy update. I think we're doing okay on time.
That, that way, I think.
That should take. We were fortunate, fortunate enough to find out in July that we've won seven hundred and seventy five thousand pounds from the National Lottery Heritage Funds, Nature Towns and Cities Programme. Uh, we bid for a project called Nature City Norwich and rarely does a source of funding fit so closely with what we want to do as a council. It's, it allows us to greatly accelerate the delivery of our biodiversity strategy. And just as a reminder, our biodiversity strategy, the central aim of it is to create a nature recovery network across the city, particularly in areas that are not um, that have less access to nature and create the wellbeing education. You know, there are so many benefits to improving access to nature in the city for both people and for nature. Um, this funding came along and it was just absolutely spot on and, you know, aims to deliver what we want to deliver. So we have brought together a partnership with Norfolk Wildlife Trust, South Norfolk and Broadland and County Council. Um, we have gone through the legal process to accept the money. Uh, we went to a parliamentary launch in September. And we've started the project. Essentially, we've had the first project meeting. We're in a stage that we would refer to as mobilisation. It's a three year project and I think we have all of the people uh around the table in a kind of leadership group um who can take this project in absolutely the right direction. It's the whole of the urban area of Norwich, so it's already talking to that Greater Norwich area. Uh, and it's three years. The first year is a kind of deep listening and engagement exercise. It's mapping stakeholders. It's everybody who owns nature assets or assets that can be turned into nature assets, whether they're blue or green, as we would say, land or water based. Um, it's then working with them to create a nature recovery network plan to connect nature and to connect people with nature. And then it's to develop uh pipeline projects so that we can um find new ways of funding those projects and, you know, develop the nature recovery network in Norwich. So we're, we're very happy to have won that money. Up and running. Over to you to forty six.
Yeah, so forty six talks about uh what's called the local nature recovery strategy. And so this is a piece of work that's being led by Norfolk County Council, has been led by Norfolk County Council, uh which is, whereas with the nature city Norwich, we're very much looking at bringing nature into the city. The local nature recovery strategy covers all of Norfolk essentially and how green spaces in Norfolk can be enhanced, joined up and sort of feed into a, a national nature recovery network. Um, and there's been sort of various consultation processes that we fed into as the city council. Um, and essentially Norfolk County Council have now reached sort of a final version that they would like our our sign off on essentially. And so we have been asked for that, uh, that response to, to sort of side it off. Uh, I believe a response has been drafted on behalf of the county or on behalf of the city council, which is going to be considered at cabinet tomorrow, the eighth of October. And the formal response is then due to go back by the thirteenth of October. Paragraph forty seven speaks to the Trees for Norwich management plan. So this was a uh document that we presented at the last SEEP. Uh, Paul Rabbits from Parks and Open Spaces team kindly came along and outlined the, the management plan. Uh, a request for comments was made at that time to, to offices. Um, and responses have since been received and, and comments uh and stand integrated into a final version of the plan, uh which has been appended to this today's SEEP report, as it were.
Hot snare.
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to feed into the um tree, tree management plan. Um, and I've seen lots of the suggestions that we made while taking on board. I think one thing that I was sad to not see reflected in the final adopted version is um a commitment to tree justice and to addressing um, you know, lack of trees in particular areas and to kind of, yeah, to, to, to ensure equity and access to trees. I think that isn't really reflected, which is a pity.
Yeah, I mean, the um Nature City Norwich project very much um is about improving equitable access to nature, in- including trees, but not only trees. So although that may not have made it into the final cut of that document, um, you know, our seven hundred and seventy five thousand pounds will be very much about using satellite data, you know, mapping. We, we have pretty good data around tree equity at the moment and, you know, is an ambition of, of that plan um to improve that over time. So that's we have a, we have a mitigation, I think, for that. Yeah.
Good luck. Yeah, it was a good report.
Thank you. We nearly pulled it in. I think your next one is you, Phil.
So I'm part of the Nature City Norwich project. Um, we, as well as developing, you know, the listening, uh the nature recovery network planning, the bringing together a pipeline of projects, there are, there are three other um development tasks that we have committed to complete. And the one that I'm reporting on here is around how we develop new blended finance models to pay for nature recovery. to pay for nature recovery. There's quite a lot going on in this space. I mean, we have carbon sequestration already, which is interesting. We think we can fund potentially trees through that. Natural England has a green token scheme that they're bringing forward. I'm sketchy on the details at the moment, hence we need to kind of, you know, we, we're basically spending some of the project funds to develop a blended finance model. We have biodiversity net gain going on as, as we, as we know as well. And there's, you know, there are the anchor institutions of Norwich who have what we'd call environment, social and governance funding to promote community benefit and nature benefit. So an important part of the project is, you know, how do we fund nature recovery? Not only how, where do we do it? Are we doing it in the right place? But how do we actually deliver that? Over to you, I think.
On to me. So there's a few sort of community related updates. So this feels like a while ago now, but back in June, our biodiversity officer, Jane Wilkinson, in collaboration with Norfolk Wildlife Trust, they hosted a biodiversity monitoring and surveying course, which essentially got some volunteer members of the public to come along and, and learn new skills in plant identification, site assessment. And essentially what that speaks to is as we move into this Nature City Norwich project, you know, there, there'll be opportunities for volunteers to get involved in things like monitoring county wildlife sites. And so that's, that's, you know, the first of potentially, potentially more training opportunities that could come through that project.
And further funding is in our Nature City Norwich project for community training events.
I may, can I just convey my thanks? I attended one of those days. And it gave me new eyes on grass when I, you know, you're suddenly there with a magnifying glass looking all the different types. And so and it would be great if we can replicate it. I appreciate these things are a slow, you know, but hopefully with a bigger team, I look forward to hearing.
I'm glad you got something out of it, Garrett. It's great. Paragraph fifty speaks to a, a community theatre project that happened back in July, which we supported. This feels a while ago now as well, but it was called Mousehole to the Marsh. It was led by the Common Lots. Councillor Charlie Kane, who is now, has now left the building, wrote all the songs for it. And it was, it was a great project. Yeah. And, you know, we, we estimate there was about 5,000 people in Norwich who saw the show. And, yeah, we think it's, you know, it's really, it's fed in quite a good time, mobilised the conversation around biodiversity as fed in quite nicely to the Nature City Norwich project. And I think just speaks to, you know, people's growing awareness of the importance of nature in, in our city and, and, you know, the multiple benefits it can bring. And similarly, kind of leading on from that project, so paragraph fifty-one speaks about a recent event called Blue and Green Corridors. And this is part of the legacy of that Mousehole to the Marsh production. So there's, there's various events that are being held that are, you know, dropping sessions for people to come along and learn a bit more about nature in the city and, and how they can support nature on their, their patch in their garden. So there's a recent event on the 10th, when was it? It was the 30th of September, which our biodiversity officer supported. And we expect there'll probably be more events coming out of that as part of the legacy that we will, of course, begin to support. Paragraph fifty-two then speaks about a pilot project that is going on within our housing estate, which our biodiversity strategy officer is leading. And this is a project called Back Garden Nature. And essentially what that project is doing is taking sort of, I would say, underused or undertended gardens within our social housing estate. And where the tenant is, is willing to sort of licence back control essentially to, to the council for that, for that garden space. We are working with groups like the Norwich Fringe Project to turn them into mini nature reserves essentially. So it's kind of, it's, you know, it's looking to create, create nature spaces within our housing estate. And it's, you know, it's one of those things that can have co-benefits, really stopping the neighbours complaining about the overgrown garden whilst at the same time tending it in a way that is good for nature. So, yes. Exactly. Yes, it has multiple benefits. Fifty-three is just about a, some works that are happening to the UEA Valley Boardwalk. I think this is probably more of an advice thing where our biodiversity officer has been sort of lending some support with that around how changes there might want to be enacted. And that is all still ongoing. And I think we're coming rapidly towards the end. Thank you very much.
That's okay.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah. So the last three paragraphs. So paragraph fifty-four speaks about some works that are planned at the Hartsease Recreation Ground, some improvements there. So it's a site that's previously had a Mia Wacky woodland planted on it. And our biodiversity strategy officer has been working with Parks and Open Spaces team to plan some further improvements there. And that's going to include 315 metres of mixed native hedgerow. And we've written 3,000 square metres of wildflower meadows, but I've been told before this meeting, there's actually 6,000 square metres of wildflower meadows. So even, even better than we thought. And so that's, it's been sort of going through, there was some consultation with members of the public that sort of tied in with a play area sort of consultation. And it's sort of in its final stage of planning ready before those, those improvement works go ahead. And then there's, there's been some recent ongoing sort of replacement and there's new tree planting, which is, has been detailed there in paragraphs fifty-five to fifty-seven. And I think that probably brings us towards the end of the report. So unless there's anything you'd like to add, Phil, it's.
Just wanted to make a little additional comment to paragraph fifty-four, which is how NCSL have been working really well with the council to understand the, the suggestion to plant a, a native hedgerow actually came from NCSL. So we've, we're working more closely with them, with Parks and Open Spaces and the environmental strategy team. And kind of understanding what their motivations and drivers are. But, and actually, we found them to be really positive about nature recovery projects. So, yeah, I think what we're seeing at the Hartsease Recreation Ground is not only an improvement to this, this space, but also we're seeing the relationship or the, the, the co-working between NCSL and the council around nature recovery really starting to pick up. So.
That's what my, our biodiversity officer, Jane Wilkinson is, has, yeah, she's just, just said before I came to the meeting, oh, by the way, it's actually 6,000, not 3,000. So I, I must have done a typo there. Apologies for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
And get through them all.
Yes. Yeah, we're better than usual. Yeah.
Well, thanks for our work. So I guess that draws a trigger and a conclusion. And we look forward to.
Well, just, just to mention, I've got a few questions on the trees from Norwich Management Plan. I think I take those offline. There's quite detailed questions relating to partly to the ward I represent. So, yeah. I'll spare the committee. Thank you. And the time we are now. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have an.
Finished ahead of time.
Good heavens.